We've got Senator Forset on the line, Senator Hanson in the room. Obviously, Mr. Katter, I'm Senator Hanson Young. Don't get the two of us confused, please. And Senator Carr is here as well. Welcome you via video conference. Understand that information on parliamentary privilege and protection of witnesses and evidence has been provided to you. For the hand side record, could you please state your full name and the capacity in which you appear today?
Robert Karl Katter, Member Four, Kennedy, Queensland.
Wonderful. Mr. Katter, do you have anything briefly you would like to say? Are you happy to go straight to questions?
No, I'd like to make-
A short opening statement? Thank you. Could you just hold one second? Could we get Hanson to turn you up a little bit, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Katter.
Christine, well, the reason that I'm particularly interested, I represent more post offices than any other Member of Parliament in Australia. Most of the squeals are coming from my urban area, Cairns, not from the remote areas, actually. Urban areas. Point one and point two, I'm one of the very few people in the federal parliament that has had the responsibilities for a bank. Have not allocated me responsibility for the state bank, Queensland and my newspaper, sacked the chairman to give a lot of money out to my rich shuckam copy mates, put to other people to charge. So I know a lot about the banking aspect. And clearly, the Boston Consulting Group bought in to do a job. You don't bring these people in unless they come in and tell you what you want to hear. Otherwise, I'll never get another contract with you, of course. Now, this lady, she took a 90% pay cut. I don't know a lot of people in Australia who've taken a 90% pay cut. Her predecessor was paying himself over 10 million. She paid herself a bit over 1 million a year. She took a 90% pay cut. She turned this operation, which is so important as far as I'm concerned, both from the banking point of view, more importantly, the mail distribution point of view, she turned into a profit-making enterprise from a profit-losing enterprise. And she did the right thing by her employees when they did an excellent job. She gave them some gold watches. Well, I thought it was a bit petty, really. I would have criticised for the other reason. But instead of giving them what they should have got, which are very substantial pay rises, in my opinion, she got out in a cheapskate and gave them the gold watches. And yet, that is the reason ostensibly. For those of us that are cynical, and it's the conclusion of my remarks, for those of us that are cynical, look at the timeline. Boston Consulting Group was bought in. Boston Consulting recommends effectively privatisation. Answer any questions on that if you wish we to. And then suddenly, she is in trouble. And the final thing I wish to say is that she was never sacked and she never resigned. I was in final year law and I was President of the Law Society at University when I was there. She made an offer to resign and the chairman of the board, what amounted to a counteroffer, he accepted her resignation on conditions. Well, in law, that is a counteroffer. There's no offer and acceptance here. There is a counteroffer that came from him back to Christine Holgate. She rejected that counteroffer. So she was still in the position. Finally, I think the attention, Senator, I think the attention of your committee, if you people are able to gain respect in the community, I'm a supporter of the Prime Minister, but by the same token, for him to appoint someone for this committee, start its deliberations, I think there's an issue, Mag, Nakata here. You know, is executive wing completely treating with contempt elected officials and representatives of the people? Think that it would be hard to avoid saying that's what occurred here. So, in conclusion, my very strong view is that the privatisation, the post office would be absolutely disastrous. Policy must be judged on its outcomes. In the electricity industry, Queensland, when it was effectively privatised and deregulated, price went up 300%. Same price for 11 years, then over the next nine years, it goes up 300%. The railways were privatised and the price of carrying goods went up 600%. Not for the mining sector, but for all the rest of us. The big foreign mining corporations did go up for them, but for us, ordinary people, went up 600%. The price of food has gone up 300% since all the food-producing industries have been deregulated. In other words, it's been absolutely disastrous. And if you want to deregulate the labour market, as the Prime Minister attempted to do and lost his seat in Parliament, you want to do that? Well, they've already pushed us from $200,000 a year in gold mining down to $100,000 and they won't be stopping there. And every dollar you take off a worker, the foreign corporations, it goes overseas. So I would say that privatisation has been an absolute disaster. And the loss of our banks, I don't think I have to tell anyone in Australia that we need a formal bank as a policeman. So I conclude by remarks. Thank you very much. Very great honour to appear before your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Katter. And I understand you were very keen to express your opinion to this committee. I might go to Senator Carr.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Katter, for coming today. You're the only Member of the House of Representatives sought to appear before the committee. And so perhaps I could ask you, your response on Thursday, the 22nd of October, in response to a question from Mr. Albanese regarding the actions of the Australia Post Board and the watches issue, the Prime Minister said that he was appalled, it was a disgrace and so on. And I immediately spoke with the shareholder minister, the Minister for Finance and the minister responsible, the Minister for Communications, Cyber Safety and the Arts. And from those discussions, the following actions ensured that there had to be an independent investigations done by the department, not by Australia Post, that the chief executive should stand aside immediately, and that an independent investigation should look into the conduct of the board and their governance, as well as the actions of the management and the executive. And the report will come back to me and to the members of my cabinet. And there are issues to be addressed with the board then, they'll be addressed then. And so appalled and shocked was I that that behaviour and any shareholder would in the company raise their outrage that I have seen that the conduct by the chief executive, the management of the board, they should insist rightly on the same thing. And the chief, and I quote, "The chief executive has been instructed to stand aside and if she doesn't wish to go, you know, then she can go." I'm just wondering, what was your response to that? Did you understand that to be an instruction to Australia Post?
The record reads, the chairman of the board, chairman of the board, I listened to, it's the only time in my life I've ever listened to, a full proceedings of a Senate inquiry or any inquiries of that matter, listened all that long. My notes say that he said Christine Holgate had done a wonderful job as CEO, but that we had to dismiss her. I would say, where I come from, you call the paddywhacker. If you say one minute, she did an excellent job, and the next minute, you said, "She's got to go." I mean, as I say, where I come from, they call them paddywhackers. So this bloke, I'd have to wonder about him. But he said he was directed by the minister. Now, I could be wrong, my notes are wrong, but my notes read, he was directed by the minister. In light of what you've asked me in this question, I think there is some appalling conduct involved here. And I hope you people get to the bottom of it.
And you're a former minister with statutory agencies under your jurisdiction and responsibilities. It is possible to direct a authority without a formal direction. Is that your experience?
You expressed your wishes to, as we did, go through the sugar industry in Queensland. It goes up, it goes down, and it was in a down cycle. And he said 25% of the shuckam farmers had to go, which meant 25% of the mills went as well. The fourth biggest agricultural industry in Australia would have been decimated. But that's what he said. So we said that, no, we wanted, we can borrow money at 2 and 3/4%, about the money, go to 2 and 3/4%. He disagreed with that proposition. He subsequently resigned, according to Courier Mail. We sacked him. I'll leave up to him to decide whether he was sacked or involuntarily. But there was no doubt he wasn't there and that the 700 million went out, 2 and 3/4%, and we made 270 million profit out of that deal. They came good, repaid the money at our commercial rates of interest, and we came out very, very strongly. But he was under pressure, I'm sure, from the banks to defy the government. And I think the precedent we're looking-
So is it your concern? I'm going to come back to that. What I'm trying to go to is that the chairman of the board says, well, look, there was no formal written direction, therefore there was no direction to the board, despite the Prime Minister saying that the chief executive has been instructed to stand aside, they use those words. But the chair says, well, because there was no in writing, no legal document, that is, an instruction in writing, therefore there was no direction. Is it your experience that doesn't necessarily have to be in writing to have the effect of a direction to a statutory authority?
Well, obviously, I'm very experienced in this area. If you defy the will of the government, if the government has got any backbone at all, you'll be looking for a new job. And you know that. So a suggestion from the government carries the force of imperial command. But there's your question.
Okay.
You require a government advice, even advice, you know? I mean, you're asking for trouble and you should get trouble. Executive arm is entitled to make those decisions.
You've introduced a new-
I believe it was the direction. I believe it was the direction. No question about it.
Okay. So, Mr. Katter, you've introduced a new aspect of this, an explanation to the proceedings here. You've suggested that the problem may well have something to do with the banks being concerned about the expansion of Australia Post's financial services. Can you, did I understand you correctly?
Very much so. And also, they resented very strongly being forced to come into the agreement, and they were, in my opinion, forced to come into the agreement, because the threat was there that if you don't agree to pay us an acceptable agency fee, then we'll set up our own bank. I mean, that threat was there and the banks had to give in to that threat and they didn't like it. That's my opinion. There's no way I've got approving it. I haven't got the research staff to do that, Senator, but I think you're well on the track of what happened.
Thank you. But I'll come back to other questions if there are others.
You don't have any questions?
We've got limited time, do we?
We do have limited time. I want to get to the department, so.
Yeah, look, I just put just a couple of questions if I could, Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Katter, thank you very much for your time and for your evidence today. Like you, I'm a huge supporter of our licensed post office network around the country, particularly in rural and regional Australia. And I do note that this was a sector, I think it's fair to say, under threat under Mr. Fahua. So I'm very pleased to see a robust LPO network. But I wanted to ask you about the charge that consumers are paying for bank transactions in post offices. It's, I've had one constituent just contact me a few days ago saying that he had to pay $4.50 per bank transaction. Now, if you're on a low income, that's a lot of money. Have you had similar sort of feedback and what's your view about that?
Well, you know, if you go to an ATM, I think charges $2.50, but please don't quote me on that. But any bank transaction, they'll charge you transaction fee. And, well, you know, the bank is entitled to charge a transaction fee. One of the reasons I want to go a people-owned bank is that it stands as a policeman. I mean, if the bank does justify a $4.50, then that's fair enough that they charge it. But is it warranted? I don't think so. But, you know, let the market-
Because isn't it the case that-
Decide, but let us know. And the only way we can ever know is to have a policeman in there. And that policeman is a people-owned bank. So we know really whether it's justified or not.
So isn't it the case that people living in rural and regional Australia, depending on the local post office for their banking services, pay a disproportionately higher charge? Because many transactions online actually occur at no cost whatsoever. So I'm wondering whether that, you know, does concern you and whether you've taken any action in relation to that charge? Because it certainly concerns me, I have to say.
Well, I mean, I don't get complaints about everything. And, you know, I've got effectively four offices, so I don't know what's coming in and what's going out. But I wouldn't have had complaints along those lines, but I should have had if that is the case.
Maybe you can take that on notice. But thank you so much. I really appreciate your time and evidence today.
Thanks, Senator Henderson. Senator Hanson, do you have a question?
Just one question, please. Mr. Katter, thank you for your evidence in this inquiry. Would you be able to tell me, why would the government, the Morrison government, hire DHL, which is a German-based company, to deliver the COVID vaccinations when we could have got our own Australia Post to do it? Do you have any comments to make there?
I, you know, I feel like I'm a Martian in the House of Representatives. I don't, I think it's different a bit in the Senate. But, you know, how-
I've seen you in action.
Well, how you could possibly have all of the information services of the Australian military in the hands of a Chinese or any foreign government is beyond my comprehension. As Andrew Wilkie, the independent from Hobart, said in seconding the motion, he said, "He couldn't make the sell." I mean, it's so ridiculous that you couldn't make it up. What do you have a secret service for? I mean, what do you have a protection of your information for if you give it to a foreign corporation? But then again, I suppose if you have sold every single one of your mining companies to foreign corporations, you sold your gas for six cents, we now buy it back at $16.80 a unit, and we sold it for six cents a unit. I suppose you just sell anything, anytime at all, for anything that stupid. But if it comes from foreigners, I think there is a fawning non-Australian. And that fawning Australian, he thinks that if it's foreigners, better than Australian. Obviously, that decision was made with motorcars. Obviously, that decision's been made with solar energy.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Katter.
If it's foreign, it's good. If it's Australian, it's not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Katter. Thank you for your evidence and appreciate your flexibility with your availability today.
Very great honour to be before the Senate inquiry. And I'm very, very proud that we've got people in the Senate that are prepared to inquire into what I think is a great and gross injustice. May God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Katter. I now welcome representatives from the Department of Finance, Department of Infrastructure, Transport, Regional Development and Communications. Now, just to be clear, everybody, we're meant to be finishing at 4 o'clock, we've got an hour. I understand that information on parliamentary privilege and the protection of witnesses and evidence has been provided to you. I remind senators that the Senate has resolved that an officer of the Department of the Commonwealth or of the state should not be asked to give opinions on matters of policy and should be given reasonable opportunity to refer questions asked of the officer to superior officers or to a minister. This resolution prohibits only questions asking for opinions on matters of policy and does not preclude questions asking for explanations of policies or factual questions about when and how policies were adopted. For the hand side record, will you please state your full names, the capacities in which you appear today? And we might start with you, Ms. Hall, and work down to Mr. Patterson.
Thank you, Chair. Stacey Hall, First Assistant Secretary, Commercial Investments, Department of Finance.
Thank you.
Hello. Andrew Jaggers, Deputy Secretary, Commercial and Government Services, Department of Finance.
Thank you.
Richard Windier, Deputy Secretary, Department of Infrastructure, Transport, Regional Development and Communications.
Lockman Patterson, First Assistant Secretary, Communications Services and Consumer Division, Department of Infrastructure.
Thank you. You should be advised that if you give evidence, I'm sorry, no, I'm reading the wrong section. Standing procedure's fine. It's been a long day already. Do we have an opening statement or are you happy to go to questions?
Happy to go to questions.
Okay. Wonderful. We might start with Senator Mackenzie.
Thank you. Thank you, Department. I'll have a range of questions on notice. With respect to the temporary arrangements, we've had a lot of evidence today about them not being implemented as planned, rural and regional areas that regular people would deem rural and regional, such as Tweed, being subjected to these sort of, to the temporary arrangements resulting in mail not getting delivered and Australia Post falling way behind on its obligations. Is this something the department monitors? Given that, is this something the department monitors? If so, how? And were you aware?
Senator, we don't monitor the sort of day-to-day delivery performance of Australia Post itself. We would, we do get information periodically from Australia Post that will go to its performance against its standards. And we do have-
Sorry, is that informal or formal?
I think we would get that in a sense, you know, as part of our formal engagement with them in the shareholder context, which are, you know, we have quarterly meetings with them, for example. But, and the other, I mean, I guess the other source of information that we would have is access to what's happening in terms of complaints coming through, either directly to us, but more likely complaints that might be going through to the postal industry, I'll admit.
Well, can I just refer you to the evidence of the C E P U, where we've got examples of mail just stacking up and up and up? And I would have thought, would have been a little more stringent than quarterly meetings that we assure ourselves as shareholders on the standards and the community service obligations that Australia Post's subject to. So on notice, can I please have detailed information, not bureaucraties, paragraph, on how, oh, please, Sarah, come on, you know. So can I have detailed, it's all right.
Government won't fall, you know. The government will not fall by this question.
Is that a word, Senator Mackenzie?
They've got this one under control. Can you please give me detailed response? And if you haven't got what needs to be in place to assure ourselves that that isn't happening, or if it is, that we know about it? Because I take from your evidence that you didn't know about it.
Senator, that's correct.
Senator, we didn't, I might just add, whilst we didn't know about the evidence that had been provided today, the information provided today, we will take on notice on what reporting we have received from Australia Post over the period in relation to the temporary arrangements.
Because it's quite disturbing.
Sorry, Senator, I might just-
Yes.
Lockman, hi.
I might just add to what my two colleagues have said. During the term of the temporary regulatory relief, we do get monthly reports from Australia Post in a written form, and they do provide information around their performance against some of these standards.
Okay, maybe I should, is the department aware of the issues in undelivered mails and parcels that we-
No, we're not, Senator.
No, you are not.
Yep.
So can I clarify that that means, Mr. Patterson, that Australia Post isn't reporting appropriately of what's obviously occurring?
They're not appropriate, the reports do not show the issues that were raised this morning.
Right. I want a lot more detail. Thank you.
Just on that point, if this matter has been raised at the previous inquiry, specifically similar terms, you say you're not aware of that?
At the previous inquiry, Senator, we did raise those issues with Australia Post and we provide assurances that the issues that were raised in regards to mail being stored, stacked and not delivered.
When you asked, when you said you weren't aware, that's not entirely true then. You'd have to say you were aware, but you've clarified it and you've had rebuttals. Isn't that more accurate?
Sorry, I meant not aware that this was an occurrence. I am aware of the accusations.
There we go. So a lot more detail, please. With respect to the temporary regulatory environment we're operating under, what is the criteria for lifting that?
Well, the temporary regulatory, there are no criteria for it ending at the moment. The regs run until the 30th of June and at that point, absent, in the absence of another government decision, it will revert back to the previous regulatory arrangements.
And have you provided any advice to the minister that would suggest that they won't be being lifted on the 30th of June?
So, Senator, we haven't provided any advice about them not being lifted, because as I say, they fall away naturally. We are certainly, we are considering, as you would expect us to do, what should be the right regulatory arrangements for Australia Post, but at this point, there is no decision of government around any changes to the regulatory framework.
Have you consulted any of the stakeholders around lifting the regulatory?
So we undertook consultation of stakeholders during this 12-month period. We, I think, as you heard earlier, Australia Post is talking to people about what they think the right regulatory arrangements should be or might be from taking, you know, that could take effect from 30 June. We haven't formally gone and consulted anyone on that question.
Okay, thank you. BCG review seems to have been put in the bottom drawer and hasn't done anything that it was supposed to do in terms of informing the strategic direction of Australia Post for its 2020/30, 2023 corporate plan. They're now turning to Mackenzie. What were the terms of reference for the Mackenzie piece of work?
Senator, I'm not sure what the terms of reference for the Mackenzie piece of work-
So that's an Australia Post only?
Commissioned by Australia Post.
Whereas the BCG was commissioned by the stakeholder ministers?
That's correct.
Yep.
So what's this, sorry.
No, you go.
What's the status of the BCG report then?
So the BCG report remains a document that is subject to government consideration. It's fair to say that the moment the BCG report was, well, very soon after the BCG report was completed, when the pandemic commenced, and that certainly has changed the operating environment, possibly permanently, but certainly temporally. And so the BCG report has remained a source of information and advice to government for government's consideration.
So it hasn't been rejected?
I think that's, it's been neither accepted nor rejected, Senator. That's correct.
Thank you. Senator Mackenzie.
I should add that it doesn't actually have a thing to accept. It's got a variety of-
Oh, options.
Options. It was very snappy. Ms. Holgate said that Australia Post executive team pushed back on the need and ability to cut back services and jobs as one of the options within the BCG report. Can the department confirm that it just wasn't Ms. Holgate that had options with selling off the parcel divisions or privatising certain aspects of and divisions of Australia Post?
Senator, I don't think, so in the context of the work done by BCG, I don't think, and without wanting to talk about the report in detail, because it's clearly still subject to a public interest immunity claim, we didn't, the process didn't have a discussion about privatisation of parcels business in that form. So I don't think I can quite answer the question. So I don't think I can quite answer the question as to who pushed back on what.
What role then does the BCG report have in informing the development of the 2023 corporate plan as envisaged by stakeholder ministers?
So I think it was obviously a recent piece of work that could have been taken into consideration, but the last... The corporate plan, that last corporate plan for Australia Post was, I suppose, in a way, the way to put it, was disrupted because of the advent of the pandemic. And as you know, as a consequence, even the timetables for producing and finalizing corporate plans were adjusted to take into effect... To take into account the pandemic. So I think whatever was envisaged for the role the BCG report might have played in that corporate plan, that was somewhat overtaken by the events that were in front of the organisation at the time.
The decision by Australia Post to stop allowing the postage of perishable goods, did the department provide any advice or was involved in any discussions with Australia Post around that decision?
No, Senator, we were not.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Senator Carr.
Thank you. Look, sorry, that's... Mr Windier, you've just said that there were no recommendations from the BCG report. Is that correct?
Yeah, didn't have recommendations as such, Senator.
I see. It's just that I've got here page 10 of the report, the executive summary report. BCG recommends, that's the words I'm quoting from, at a minimum, a stage along the lines of Reform Path 1 and so on. It goes through the whole details. And it goes on to say, more specifically, across the broad range of possible reform options for Australia Post, BCG recommends. These are the words used. I'm just wondering how you reconcile your statement with... To this committee, which was similarly stated by the Chair of the Board, with the actual words of the report and the fact that there was a five-hour meeting to discuss this report on the 20... Was it the 20th of February? Sorry, 21st of February this year. Sorry, last year.
Senator, there was indeed that discussion, as you've heard. The point I was making is it wasn't a report which had in the form that... I was using the term recommendation as if there was a section of that report with a series of recommendations in it. There were... The fact that the word recommends was used in the report wasn't the point I was making. There is no list of a number of recommendations in that report.
I'm sorry, but that's not my reading of the document. There's a series of what's in regard to reform paths, pages one...
It's recommended advice, isn't it?
There's a series of... One hundred and fifteen, one hundred and sixteen, there's, you know, with costings associated with them. But the word recommended is clearly in black and white. You're a man of letters. The word recommended in normal public service language means the same to us, I would have thought, as it would mean to you. I'm just wondering, again, how you can reconcile with the evidence you presented to the committee with the stated position in this report?
Senator, I can only say that as you have in front of you in that executive summary, there are a series of reform pathways or reform paths that are put forward in it. There is no...
Okay. Well, let me just go through those propositions. What was actually discussed at the five-hour meeting?
And who was there?
And obviously, there was a... Well, according to the evidence we have before the committee, it was a full board meeting. Is that correct?
Senator, I wasn't actually present at that meeting. I might see if others at the table can comment.
Senator, I was at the meeting where BCG presented.
Was it a full board, sorry, Mr Jaggers, or a subcommittee of the board?
My understanding, it was a full board meeting.
That's what it says here.
And shareholder departments and BCG attended that for a session.
And Mackenzie's were there too?
No, Senator, not at the time I was there. It wasn't a five-hour session. My recollection is that we may have had an hour or so with the board. There was a... I'd have to check the exact timing, but it certainly wasn't a five-hour sort of meeting.
Would you please check your records?
I will.
Because that's the evidence we have before the committee.
Yeah. So we attended a part of a board meeting.
Oh, so there could have been five hours.
There could have been a five-hour board meeting, of which you've mentioned others were present.
All right, let me get it clear. Presented for several hours at a five-hour Australia Post board meeting on their findings is the evidence we have. On their findings, right?
Yeah. So I'll take on notice the actual timing. Look, it may have been an hour and a half or so, I'm not exactly sure, but my recollection is that BCG presented their key findings from their analysis of the information. This was information mostly provided late 2019, early 2020. There was a discussion about those findings. This had been a very open process involving Australia Post and the shareholder departments and BCG. There's a series of steering committee meetings that had happened over a period of time involving...
Steering committee meetings.
Involving Australia Post and shareholder ministers and BCG.
Who were the members on those, on that steering committee?
So the steering committee involved myself and my colleagues from the Department of Infrastructure now, and also involved senior representatives from Australia Post. And BCG also attended those meetings.
Any board members?
There were no board members at those steering committee meetings.
Could you give us a list of those senior officers?
I'll take that on notice.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm standing...
Senator, sorry, could I also ask for a schedule of the meetings of the steering committee?
Sure, there was a handful of meetings. There's probably four meetings or so over a period of time, and we can provide that on notice.
Was that meeting held here in Canberra?
There was one steering... There would have been meetings in Canberra. Some of them would have been by... Probably all of them by video or telephone conference.
Okay.
If you could take... Do you want the ministers to know what you talked about?
We wouldn't have reported at the end of each steering committee meeting. We would have used that process to inform the report, and then when the report would have been provided to the ministers.
Mr Jaggers, can you confirm that BCG was present at that board meeting for three of the five hours?
Senator, I can assist with that. So on the 20th of February 2020, the five-hour board meeting, there was an hour and a half set aside for Australia Post, for BCG and departmental reps to present on the BCG report from 4:00 till 5:30. My recollection is that that roughly went to time. We might have gone a little bit over, but it was somewhere between an hour and a half and two hours on that day.
And would you be able to provide us with the presentation that was made? I understand there was an overhead presentation, is that correct?
Senator, I'll take that on notice.
A slideshow presentation.
Could I have a look at those?
I will take it on notice, Senator.
Thank you. And is it the case, Ms Hall, that you emailed a final draft of the BCG report, which the departments presented to the shareholder ministers, copying the CEO, on the 21st of February?
Yes, that's correct, Senator.
Thank you. And was that report in any way different from that, the report that was canvassed with the board at the meeting on the 20th?
As you've alluded to, the discussion with the board was around a PowerPoint presentation, and the email that I sent the following day was the detailed... Was the more detailed full version of the report, but they were largely consistent.
The same documents?
Yes, largely consistent. No, they were not the same documents.
Sorry, they were not?
They were not the same documents. One of the material that was discussed at the board was a PowerPoint presentation. The material that was emailed the day after was a full final draft version of the report, and Ms Holgate is tabled, the executive summary.
Were the pathways in any way different from that contained in the executive summary that's been presented to this committee?
They were largely consistent, Senator.
Thank you.
Divestiture of the parcels.
So just to be clear, the presentation was based on the final report, which was emailed the next day?
Largely, Senator, yes.
Yes, thank you. Senator Carr.
I'm just wondering, there was also a variation in the BCG contract. They paid an extra $600,000. That is correct, isn't it?
I have to take that on notice, Senator. I don't have those details to hand. It's pretty pertinent.
Was anyone here able to help me? Was there a variation in the BCG contract?
So can you just give us the date, Senator, if you've got some of those details?
Well, the date of the variation, no, that's your job. You're going to have to tell me the dates, but was there a variation in the BCG contract?
That was good. That was good. Should have asked you.
That's right. I'll have to congratulate our research officer for that.
Senator, I think that there was a variation in the contract. The details of that, I'd probably have to follow up with you on notice.
That's the nature of this process. I'm told it was $600,000, and you give me a chance... This is your chance to tell me, no, Carr, you're wrong. It was $598,000, whatever it is.
Does that then take it to 1.9% or is it 1.3 including the $600? Someone knows here.
For the report.
He's looking.
Senator, the original piece of work was 1.32 million dollars. There was a subsequent piece of work, but I don't have the details in front of me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the 1.3 was part of that extra dividend that Australia Post paid to the government, wasn't it?
Yeah, so the... So Australia Post paid a special dividend in relation to the first part of that report.
That's 53 million or thereabouts?
I'm sorry, Senator.
53 million or thereabouts, wasn't it?
I can't tell you the total dividend, but the amount that you referenced was the special dividend that was applied.
What I want to know is, the $600,000 or whatever the final figure is, who paid that money?
Senator, that was paid by departments after it was varied. I don't think it was...
And what was it paid for?
It wasn't paid by Australia Post.
Which department and who? What was it paid for? What was the purpose of the extra payments?
I might just get the details of that. I think there was an additional piece of work that was conducted in terms of assessing the success of the temporary or the implementation of the temporary reforms, but I'll come back to you with the details on notice.
Thank you. Thank you. And what... I'm particularly interested to know.
Ms Hall, did you have something you were going to...
I was just going to suggest that we might be able to come back to that shortly.
Can I... Okay. Can I just... Sorry, Senator Carr. So this extra piece of work, which was to assess the temporary arrangements, as in the temporary regulation that was put in place?
When the temporary arrangements were put in place, ministers indicated that they'd review those arrangements after the first six months. My recollection, it is that it was to assist with that initial review of the temporary arrangements, but I'll come back to you on notice with the exact details.
So there is a direct link then between the original work that BCG did and the original final report, and then asking them to follow up on this temporary regulation? So BCG is all over this?
So BCG provided its initial report, and as has been provided in evidence that was considered by government at the time of considerations around the temporary arrangements. But the BCG report did not go to any COVID scenarios because it happened at a time before we went into COVID. But BCG at that time had done a lot of analysis of the business and of the regulatory framework. And so when we needed someone to provide some assistance in...
They were well placed.
They were very well placed to do that piece of work as an additional piece.
It's just that the original... The evidence presented, the original proposal to support the regulations was that there'd be layoffs of one in four poster workers when the regulations were introduced, and that the revenues projections were of very negative impact on cash flows. Now, those things didn't happen.
Senator, the temporary arrangements didn't predict a laying off of staff members within Australia Post. Those arrangements... There was a request from Australia Post for regulatory relief, and the government considered that request. And the intention was to certainly free up Australia Post, give it the flexibility to deliver on the significant challenges that it was facing during COVID, including the massive increase in e-commerce and parcel deliveries.
But they're always presented... They're always... Because I'm time so short, I mean, I'd normally go through this a bit more slowly, but they're always presented as temporary. Always temporary. So what advice have you provided to government, or have you provided advice to government about the return to the normal operating environment after the expiry of these regulations?
So we have provided advice to our minister on the arrangements, and it's a decision for government in terms of...
Who did you consult with to construct that advice? Because everyone we've spoken to says let it lapse on the 30th.
Senator, we haven't engaged in a public consultation process. We provide advice to our minister on an ongoing basis on a range of issues, and the government has yet to make a decision or...
No, no, but Mr Jaggers, the minister's already told the Senate when he introduced these legislation, so these regulations, that the minister has... There was no plans to extend the measures. And we've been told today that six weeks ago, the management of Australia Post went to the CPSU with the... So the C P U, the postal workers, with a view to getting a joint submission to government to extend the regulations. Now, were you aware of that?
I'm certainly aware that Australia Post has an ongoing dialogue with the unions in relation to that.
Thank you. I'm sure you are. I'm sure you're aware of that. I want to know, were you aware of the plans by Australia Post management to extend the regulations?
Australia Post management isn't in a position to extend the regulations.
No, I know that.
Only to provide us opinion.
Come on, come on, Mr Jaggers. Let's not dance around this. Are you aware of the plans by Australia Post management to recommend to government for an extension in cooperation with the union?
To seek an extension.
So I'm aware that Australia Post was discussing with its stakeholders the temporary arrangements and whether they should be extended, seeking their views in relation to that.
That's all right. Now, I'm going to the question about whether or not you have had direct dialogue with Australia Post management about that extension.
Well, I think we have said we have very regular dialogue with Australia Post about the temporary arrangements and the...
And has an extension been discussed?
Well, the discussions with Australia Post are about the existing arrangements that are in place, and certainly we have discussed with Australia Post what things look like post the end of those regulations, at the end of 30 June.
Have you discussed an extension?
We're in no position to offer an extension. We've discussed the... How the regulations are working so that we can advise our ministers.
Has an extension been discussed at all? I'm not asking whether you can do it. Obviously, it's up to the Parliament as to whether a regulation gets extended.
Senator, we've been talking about the business and a range of options, and we've been talking to them about the current regulatory arrangements and what's working. It's part of our role as the... One of the shareholder departments is to keep in close contact with the government business.
Sounds like a yes to me, Senator.
So can I ask you, who drew up the regulations?
I mean, they were... The decision on the final... On what has become the temporary regulatory relief was made by government, and then the drafting of those...
Who drew up... Who drafted those regulations?
The Office of Parliamentary Council.
Oh, yes. And who provided the drafting instructions to the Parliamentary Council?
I suspect our department did, Senator.
Your department. And is it your... The evidence presented to this committee that the regulations have a remarkable similarity to the Boston Consulting Group Reform Path 3? Is there any reference to the Boston Consulting Group Reform Path 3 when those regulations were drawn up? Even if those Reform Path 3 were in draft form at the time of the drafting of those regulations?
Senator, there were no draft regulations in play before we issued the drafting instructions.
So how do you explain the remarkable similarity between Boston Consulting Group Reform Path 3 and the temporary regulations?
Well, Senator, I think we... I think you and I might have canvassed this in a previous committee last year. It is... And I think, as we've said previously, the... When the request for temporary... When the request for regulatory relief came into government, we did consider what we thought was a sensible and practical set of regulatory reforms based on what Australia Post had put to us as their preference. We then did take advice to government on that, and I think we have... We then did take advice to government on that and I think we have said previously that included providing a copy of the Boston Consulting Group or at least the executive summary to it at that point.
So they went simultaneously, did they? A copy of the report, draft report at that stage and your draft.
So Senator, given, in the context, at the time where the pandemic had commenced, Australia Post had written to us with really some quite challenging scenarios they thought they might be facing in the context of the pandemic and a request for certain types of regulatory relief. We considered that and provided advice to government. And because we did have the Boston Consulting Group report recently completed, albeit not associated with a pandemic type scenario, but certainly relevant to, it had explored questions in terms of the ongoing sustainability of Australia Post, that the executive summary of that report was made available in that process. But the, but there was no suggestion that the regulatory relief was a, was based around or taken from the Boston Consulting Group report. In fact, the regulatory relief was based around our consideration of the original request coming in from Australia Post.
Thank you. Now, Senator Henderson, but just before that, Senator Forsette has a couple of questions, then I'll go to you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, just a couple of questions.
I just want to clarify, only because he's the deputy chair, that's the only reason.
Absolutely, I will always defer to Senator Forsette under these circumstances.
Yeah, that's the only reason. Senator Forsette?
Thank you. Couple of questions for the Department of Finance. Could you clarify how many Commonwealth government business enterprises there are?
Senator, there are nine government business enterprises, seven Commonwealth companies and two are corporate Commonwealth entities.
Thank you. Do you have policies around expenditure by GBEs?
Yes, I'll ask Ms. Hall to.
We don't need chapter and verse, just a brief outline would be fine.
Senator, so the policies for the expenditure of public money are governed by the PGPA Act for all GBEs and in fact all Commonwealth entities and companies. And then it's up to the accountable authorities, in this case the boards, to set the policies within the organisations with respect to expenditure.
And do those policies by the accountable authorities include policies around gifts either to people external or within GBEs?
Yes, Senator, the governance and oversight requirements for government business enterprises require the boards of GBEs to put in place codes of conduct particularly that govern amongst other things expenditure on gifts and receipt of gifts and benefits for employees within the organisation.
Any other examples, any other examples you are aware of of GBEs purchasing what would be commonly considered luxury gifts for staff?
I don't have any awareness of specific examples within other GBEs. I'll go back to my earlier answer that the expenditure policies and the compliance with expenditure policies of the spending of public money by GBEs is a matter that is the responsibility of the boards.
So we wouldn't have known about this had it not been for Senator Kitchen. So this had been spent two years ago, you would never know, Ms. Hall, would you? Who's spending what on what, because it is the responsibility, the compliance to these policies is a responsibility for the board.
We receive information on the financial and non-financial performance of the GBEs on a quarterly basis. That does not include any details nor would we have visibility of individual transactions through other processes such as budget processes.
Senator Forsette?
My final question for you then is are there any legal or ethical issues with an employee receiving not only their base remuneration but payments for performance and gifts by an accountable authority instruction for the same work?
Remuneration and reward and recognition policies are matters for the boards of the individual authorities. They, all expenditure within these authorities though does need to meet the requirements of the PGPA Act in relation to the proper use of public resources.
Thank you. Senator, sorry, Senator Forsette?
If I may just clarify then, does the Act have any objection, if I can use that phrasing, to an employee being paid not only their base salary but also a performance payment and receiving a gift for the same achievement in the line of their work?
That's a matter for the board to determine in relation to the activities of the entity and its internal policies. With regard to the obligations of the board under the PGPA Act, they must ensure that any and all expenditure is for a proper use of public resources.
Senator Henderson?
Thank you very much, Chair. Look, I just want to pick up on the questions of Senator Forsette in relation to expenditure of GBEs. Has the department now sought to intervene in relation to the breadth of expenditure that should properly be made by GBA's, GBEs? Not just in relation to luxury items, but I also refer to a number of other contentious types of expenditure such as the gifting of Harvard executive courses, donations to charities. Perhaps there's also a suggestion that membership of the Young Presidents' Organisation was paid for by Australia Post. I mean, these are things that, given this is taxpayers' money, would rightly concern the department.
Senator, following the Maddox investigation, the Minister for Finance wrote to all Commonwealth entities, Commonwealth companies and government business enterprises, drawing their attention to their governance obligations and asking them to review their internal governance arrangements and controls and update them if they are necessary. So those letters went out earlier this year. And they focus on providing a reminder of the general duties of the accountable authority, particularly the requirements related to proper use and management of public resources under the PGPA Act. So Senator, the Minister for Finance has been concerned to ensure that everyone is aware of their obligations, understands their obligations and is taking action to ensure that expenditure is happening in accordance with the PGPA Act.
And so just in terms of the examples I have cited, are those types of expenditure within the Act in your view?
Sorry, Senator, could you just refer to those?
Well, I've talked about making charitable donations to charities, the payment of membership such as to the Young Presidents' Organisation, I mean even things like, you know, business meals and the like. Do they fall within the proper expenditure by a taxpayer funded government business enterprise?
So the PGPA Act doesn't set out a list of things that are okay and a list of things that are not okay.
Yeah, I realise that, but I'm asking for your view.
It's a matter of judgment and it's a matter of judgment by the accountable authority at the time to ensure that it's a proper use and it's being used for the business purpose of that organisation. So, Senator, I couldn't pass judgment on particular items, but I would say that the proper use is a decision of the accountable authority. The accountable authority needs to put in practices and procedures to make it clear that a delegate is actually able to spend money on the item that they're purchasing.
So Australia Post is already, they're conducting a review of the policy because the last time the Chair was in front of us, he admitted that it wasn't a breach of the PGPA Act. It was actually a breach, like they had their own internal policies. And in fact, the Maddox review shows that Ms. Holgate didn't breach internal Australia Post policies at all, did she?
Well, so the Maddox review.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair.
Senator, so the Maddox review had a number of key findings.
I'm talking specifically about 10, six, eight, nine and 10.
Yes, so, so Reda, Reda's a whole, firstly, they found that that the resources belong to the people of Australia, so that was their first sort of key finding.
No one's arguing with that, well, Mr. Jaggers.
Sorry, Chair, I would like the call.
Okay.
They found that the.
It's all right, no, I don't need a summary of the Maddox review.
No, we have been there, we've been there.
Thank you, thank you very much, Senator Mackenzie. Look, just to clarify, Senator Mackenzie's question, my recollection, I haven't got the Maddox review in front of me, was that it found that there was a technical breach of the Act.
They found nothing dishonest was going on.
No, no, thanks, thanks, I'm not asking you, Senator Mackenzie. That's correct, isn't it? It found that there had been a technical breach of the Act in relation to the purchase of the luxury Cartier watches.
It found it had been a technical breach, but Senator, it found that there was no policy to support the watches being purchased. It found that the Australia Post board had not issued any reward or recognition policy that would support the reward and recognition of executive performance through provision of those items.
Okay, thank you. So when do you expect, after the minister has written to the GBEs in relation to these important and serious matters, when do you expect a response so that the people of Australia can be assured as that these GBA's have policies which reflect community expectations?
Well, Senator, that's an ongoing responsibility of each GBE now. And so certainly with Australia Post, a number of timeframes were imposed on that organisation to review processes and procedures and to come back to ministers by a certain date. So I might ask Ms. Hall to expand on that.
So as Mr. Jaggers indicated, Australia Post is required to write to shareholder ministers by the 31st of March, which they have done, confirming their response to certain aspects of the investigation. And then they have to come back by the 30th of June in relation to issues that they need to implement that will take longer, slightly longer to put in place.
All right, and just, I'll be very quick, Chair, thank you very much. Look, just in relation to the numerous attempts today to suggest that there's some agenda to privatise part or whole of Australia Post.
Just a report that outlines those options.
Can I just ask, have either of Australia Post's shareholding ministers ever proposed the privatisation of Australia Post?
Senator, there is no proposal or consideration or work being done on a privatisation of any part of Australia Post.
So you're not aware of any government plans at all in that respect?
No, there is no plan, in fact ministers have said the opposite.
And was the Australia Post board ever asked to work on a plan for any sort of privatisation?
Not in my time of involvement with Australia Post in the past five years.
Oh, in any time?
No time that I'm aware of, Senator.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I've just got some questions in relation to the current legal letter sent by Ms. Holgate to both ministers and to Australia Post. I assume you're both aware of this?
Yes, Senator, we're aware of the letter.
When did you receive this letter?
Second half of last week, I think, Senator.
Okay. And so Minister Fletcher received this letter or it went to the department?
Senator, I'd have to check. I suspect it came through the normal process of a letter addressed to the minister and came to us through the normal channels.
Uh huh, and just checking for Department of Finance, a letter was also sent to the Finance Minister?
It was received by the Finance Minister and the Finance Minister's office forwarded it to the department.
Sorry, Mr. Windy is correct, it came down from the Minister Fletcher's office.
So both ministers have been sent a letter from Christine Holgate's lawyer, that's correct?
That's correct.
And has this been passed on to the government solicitor or are you in negotiations with Ms. Holgate now over potential legal action?
Senator, I think this is a letter from Ms. Holgate to ministers and we might have to take on notice any questions about how the departments are responding or ministers are responding to it.
Hang on. If indeed Ms. Holgate, this ends up in court, this is going to cost the Australian taxpayer, isn't it? So surely the Australian people, who else is going to pay?
Well, Senator, you're describing a potential legal matter that isn't currently on foot, but if it were.
You explain to us what is on foot then, Mr. Jaggers.
As you indicated, and I think has been a public comment made on this, there's been a letter received from Ms. Holgate's solicitor and the government department will carefully consider that matter, the ministers will carefully consider that matter. But certainly, in many senses, this is a letter from a private citizen to the ministers and we take very seriously our obligations around privacy in relation to any legal matter from an Australian citizen that involves the government.
And has the either department or either minister sought advice, legal advice in relation to this letter from Senator, from Christine Holgate? Have you sought your own legal advice on this?
I'd have to take it on notice, Senator, I'm not aware.
What's the normal course of action if a minister's sent a letter engaging lawyers?
So this letter was received late last week and usually that would be referred to departments and departments might provide some advice to ministers in relation to their ministerial responsibilities in response to that matter. But that hasn't occurred yet, we've just received the letter fairly recently and are in the process of dealing with it.
And have you, has the minister sought, have either Minister Fletcher or Minister Birmingham sought advice as to how much this might be costing? Is it, are we going to see the Commonwealth in court because of this?
You're asking me to speculate, Senator, and I'm not in a position to speculate.
So you haven't briefed, so you haven't briefed the minister yet properly about what the scenario could be?
Well, Senator, we haven't briefed the minister. We wouldn't usually go into the processes on an individual case and talk about an individual matter.
But this is the matter, this is all in relation to the matter before this committee. And what we've got, we've got a Senate inquiry on foot and now we also have two ministers and the Australia Post board being sent letters from Ms. Holgate's lawyer asking for engagement so that this doesn't have to go to court. What are you doing about it?
Well, Senator, it's been given appropriate consideration and we're doing we're doing what we would usually do in such circumstances and we'll provide advice to the minister at the appropriate time and we're doing that as quickly as we can.
Chair, I would like to ask some questions.
Senator Hanson hasn't been yet, so we have to go to Senator Hanson. Senator Hanson?
Thank you very much. Mr. Jaggers or whoever can answer my question, tell me the procedure of appointing a new CEO to Australia Post, what happens?
Senator, the procedure would be that the board would would conduct a recruitment exercise and would identify a candidate and make a recommendation to government around the appointment of that person as a director of the company and.
Who makes the recommendation, the board or the minister or the department? Who's in control of the, who's involved in it?
Certainly the board makes the recommendation, but I might see if Ms. Hall can help with the process or Mr. Windy?
So Senator, the board reaches a conclusion on who they propose to appoint as the CEO. They advise the shareholder ministers and as is usual practice for significant appointments, that does get considered, does get considered by cabinet, but the appointment itself is one made by the board.
So it's a legal requirement by the board, but it did go to cabinet?
It's a.
It has to be signed off by the minister, is that correct?
It has to be, it is considered, it is considered by cabinet, it is not, the minister doesn't have a decision.
Okay, so the appointment of the new CEO, Paul Graham, announced before this committee convened on its first hearing date, that was actually acknowledged by the cabinet saying they're going to appoint a new CEO when they knew this inquiry was going to take place. So therefore it's been approved by the cabinet. So it wasn't the board, it was the cabinet that approved it.
The cabinet by that stage had considered the recommended. The cabinet by that stage had considered the recommendation of the proposal put to it by the board, yes.
Right. Do you know what the new CEO is getting paid?
The new CEO is getting paid in accordance with the Remuneration Tribunal arrangements that set the salary of the CEO of Australia Post.
But that's got to be signed off by the department, by the minister?
Senator, no, the salary arrangements.
Remuneration, that's, oh, that's under category E, isn't it, and that's said by the?
The remuneration is, the decision, the actual remuneration decision will be a matter for the board to settle with the CEO, but the board have to do that within the constraints set by the Remuneration Tribunal.
Do you have any idea what's in that contract? Say if Mr Graham was not to take up that position, what would he, what would it cost the taxpayers?
Senator, I'm not privy to the, not privy to the contract that's been negotiated.
I'm going to go back to about the BCG that you had, those meetings. Mr Jaggers, I understand there was more than one meeting that was held with regards to it, is that correct? By teleconference or by personal meeting?
Yes, Senator, there was, there was a series of meetings of a steering committee that involved senior representative of Australia Post, including Ms Holgate. That was a steering committee that convened throughout BCG's work, but there was a single meeting with the board.
There was a single meeting with the board, with the full board?
Yes, that's, I understand that was the full board, that was my understanding.
Yes, it was.
Was there a meeting held here in Canberra where the CEO and the Chair Bartolomeo attended that meeting here in Canberra?
Yes, there was a meeting, separate meeting to the steering committees with the Chair, and Ms Hall probably has the details, I'll ask her to talk to it.
If I can advise what details, when that actually occurred?
Yes, I can assist the committee. So the steering committee meetings were roughly fortnightly, they commenced in November.
November of?
November 2019, my apologies. The first meeting was on the 21st of November, the second meeting was on the 3rd of December 2019. The third meeting was on the 19th of December 2019.
So there's quite a number of them.
When was the meeting in relation, when the board, the Chair was there and?
Yep.
And Christine Holgate, that they came here in Canberra?
At the time, here in Canberra?
Yes, it was. There was a meeting in Canberra on the 4th of February 2020 with the new Chair, Mr Bartolomeo.
Sorry, what was that date?
Fourth of February 2020.
Twenty twenty.
Prior to the briefing of the full board?
Yes.
Yes.
And what's, sorry, Senator Hanson, what state was the report at that point? Must have been fairly close to being completed if you were, if there was a, it was only a week or so before the full briefing?
It was about three weeks before the full briefing of the board, which was on the 20th, and it was probably three quarters complete at that stage. It was a very short review, which commenced in late November, and so things were still coming together right at the very last minute.
Senator Hanson.
So when Bartolomeo gave evidence that he only flicked through the pages and knew nothing about the report, it's really understating his involvement in it, wasn't it? Hmm.
He remembered that he'd had the briefing.
Yeah, he did correct that evidence.
I remember. I'm glad it's on the record now that he has done it.
I think the point Senator Hanson is making seems as though it would have been hard to have forgotten, but obviously he did.
With the, there was a media release by the shareholder ministers with regards to the statement of Ms Holgate standing down. Now, that was put out at 5:25pm on October 22nd. The board was still meeting and hadn't finished their meeting until 6:20, where they were still discussing about Christine Holgate standing down. Why or how could the shareholders' ministers possibly put out a media statement at 5:25 when the board hadn't finished their deliberations? Can anyone answer that?
I don't think, I can take that on notice, but I don't think we were involved.
I'd like an answer from the minister. If you can't answer me.
I can take that on notice.
I want to know who gave the authority to put it out when no determination was made at that time by the board?
So, Senator, all I can do is take that on notice.
Thank you. What investigations are done by the department to ensure the board is complying with the Act and regulations? How many investigations do you do into the board?
Well, Senator, we've done this investigation, the Maddox investigation.
Prior to all this, prior to all this, you didn't know, the watches were bought in 2018. It was only because, it happened with Senator Kitching that she raised about the watches, you had no idea. So what I want to know is, what do you, how do you investigate the board as far as their expenses, even their remuneration? I mean, say, the Prime Minister goes off, this is out of public, it doesn't pass the pub test, you know? It's not the public's expectations. I have here remuneration packages of executives that are on $890,000 a year, are getting $669,000 in incentive payments. And to hear the ministers complain and the Prime Minister complain about $20,000 in watches, that is pittance compared to what's here. Who actually reins in that spending? How much, how is the board investigated with, and who is responsible for these remuneration packages, incentive packages, and everything that goes on? This is taxpayers' dollars, remember? That's what the Prime Minister said, taxpayers' dollars.
So, Senator, the, so as Mr Windy had just referred to, the CEO's package is determined through the Remuneration Tribunal. The requirement for all GBEs is that the board would set the policies in relation to the remuneration of individuals, and so in Australia Post case, they would, they would set, they've got, I think, a a remuneration committee, subcommittee of the board, but they would set the the rules around remunerating individuals in terms of the amount of salary that's a base salary and amount that's at risk. Our expectation is that boards take into account the sector that they're working in and have, you know, sort of comparable arrangements with industry. So if they're in a telecommunications sector or another, they would establish those arrangements.
We do have to wind it up, have you got a final question?
Yes, I do, okay. So the fact is that you're saying that that's up to the board to decide in remuneration what's paid to them. Then why does the, why did the government, why did the Prime Minister, why did the ministers weigh in on $20,000 of watches that were spent because Ms Holgate, as the CEO, had the authority to spend up $150,000? So why is it all of a sudden, you're, the ministers are complaining about it, public expectation, but you turn around and say to me that remuneration sits up to the board, that's no problem? That's what you're telling me?
Well, in the case that you're referring to.
The case before this inquiry?
What Maddox found was that even though there was a credit card limit, financial delegation of up to $150,000, spending needs to be in accordance with the policies and procedures of the entity.
With all due respect, Mr Jaggers, that isn't the question Senator Hanson is asking. Senator Hanson is asking, why is there such a difference between a $20,000 payment for watches versus the hundreds of thousands of dollars in bonuses? What one upsets the Prime Minister more?
Well, that's not a question.
No, okay.
Well, then I'll say, then for who, why wasn't something done about for who when he was buying cars, when he was buying watches, giving watches away, when for who was actually buying tickets to the Olympics, which cost tens of thousands of dollars? Why wasn't that picked up by the ministers? Why wasn't there complaint about that? Why is it just Christine Holgate? That's what the public want to know, that's what I want to know.
Senator Hanson, thank you. Senator Mackenzie, you've got some questions on notice, do you?
Short answers. So, we know she didn't breach an internal policy, great doublespeak, really loved how you answered that question earlier. She didn't breach internal Australia Post policy, Ms Holgate, the subject of this inquiry.
Well, I still want to clarify, Senator Mackenzie.
If she didn't, it is up to the board to set the policy. She didn't breach that policy, that's not your evidence, it's actually the Chair's evidence. On what basis then did the minister call for an investigation? I think it was your minister might have instigated the investigation?
So the shareholder ministers initiated the investigation on the 22nd of October.
Given she didn't breach the internal policies of Australia Post.
Well, what I said in my evidence was that there was no policy that would have allowed her to have purchased those watches as a gift. So there was no policy that allowed it.
Disallowed it either.
So spending under the PGPA Act has to be for a purpose, that is an agreed purpose, and that, I think the Maddox report is pretty clear that there was no such proper purpose for this spending. So the investigation was called prior to the.
But that she was subject to the policies of Australia Post board, right? So if they haven't got those settings right.
Well, they had a.
Get the policy setting right through the board, rather than getting rid of somebody that's thinking she's actually within her jurisdiction as CEO to purchase those watches. I don't think we'll get any further on debating that. In terms of extending the temporary regulations, so I want to guarantee that there's been no discussion, no consideration of extending these to rural and regional areas?
No, Senator.
Okay, and I just find it incredible that Senator Kitching, two years later, knows about Cartier watches.
The whole 19th floor knew about it.
I'm getting there, Senator, I'm getting there. So I want to know, we hear, we've heard that we don't actually get the breakdown of the gifts. Is it the evidence to this committee from both the Department of Finance and the Department of Communications? I hope, I know you've got a longer name now. That neither department was aware of this purchase until Senator Kitching.
Not one person in either department?
Not that I'm aware of, Senator, I was certainly not aware.
Come on, come on.
So, I mean, our evidence, as Ms Hall said earlier, is that we don't get a line-by-line breakdown of everything the organisation spends its money on. And, but no, I was not aware until it was mentioned in that 22nd of October hearing about the purchase.
Did the minister ask why you weren't? Did the minister, did either of your ministers say, what on earth has been going on here?
Chair, I just.
No, hang on, I want an answer to that.
Well, I know you've asked me to hang on, but you can't reflect on officers in that way.
Well, no, it's not a reflection on the ministers.
Well, the answer is that the ministers asked us to investigate it.
Sorry, what was that, Mr Jaggers?
Well, the answer is that the ministers asked the departments to investigate the circumstances around the purchase so that the ministers and government could be properly informed about what happened.
So do you envisage changing how things are reported going forward so that this doesn't happen to ministers again? I'll go to, I want to answer from each of you.
Well, Senator, I don't think, I don't think where there is any intention to change the fundamental arrangements whereby, of the relationship between governments and and GBEs and the governance arrangements that have been established for how that should operate. So, as Mr Jaggers has pointed out, in light of this investigation, there has been action taken with respect to all GBEs and Australia Post in particular. But there is no, there's no intention to fundamentally change the governance arrangements that have been in place for some time. Not so far, no, I don't think so, Senator, because I think there is no desire to adjust the arrangements whereby proper accountability for activities rests with the proper authority rather than us trying to take on responsibility of the board.
So going forward, this could happen again?
Well, certainly with Australia Post, they've been given some directions or requests to tighten up their performance and their governance arrangements.
But you don't know really who's buying what or giving what gifts to which executives, because you don't get the reports in, and you have no intention of changing that arrangement.
But it was such a big deal.
My point is this could happen again.
Well, this is the responsibility of the accountable authority, each accountable authority, to make sure that the spending is for the purpose that is agreed to.
So nothing will change.
And you've investigated NBN, $77 million. I'm sure you're looking into that one.
I'm finished, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the department's reps. If there's any questions on notice, which I think there was actually, we will get that, we'll get you the dates. Have we set a date for that, Stephen? For the 5th of May is when we require answers to be back, thank you. We conclude the hearing today. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Thank you to the secretary, especially thank you to the secretary, given that we had so many technical difficulties today and you dealt with it well. Thank you to Hansard.